I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have a motion to adopt the agenda. We're going to load the ordinance transportation up.
Oh, I'm sorry. With one question. Forgot about you guys.
I'll second you.
Motion to make a second to the favor. Okay, motion to adopt the consent agenda.
Would we approve the consent?
Motion to make a second to the favor. We'll go down to speakers communication informational items. So we'll turn it over to you guys.
Let's just do a quick little introduction. My name's Howard Postable, head of ODOT on model of the grand office. I'll talk to you sometime, Jeff. So we have a project coming up through Lakeview State Highway System. And we'll have more of an explanation of the whole ADA program. But say I'm kind of heading up the project development coordination on the ODOT side. We have our designers from David Evans Associates here. Talk about plan. And Dick Upton, who's our manager of the ODOT ADA program. And he's going to give a little introduction as to what we're up to for ADA. We've got a lot of work ahead of us to get done. So in our enterprise, we're not enterprise, but Lakeview is one of our pilot communities that we want to try and get some more cost effective means of upgrading our ramps.
Okay. How do we launch before we go?
Let's see, they're turning on the computer. We gotta turn on the other thing.
Okay. There's Howard speaking. That I will say, I know some of the most scary words in English language, I'm going to say them. And we, well, I guess everything, yeah, it's in the slides, but I'm sure everyone knows or has heard that ODOT got sued a couple of years ago by the Association of Centers for Independent Living. And we got sued because we were not building ramps where we should and not building programs and other facilities up to standards. And so that we started a program. We got notified lawsuit in 2015, negotiated through 2016, settled in 2017. And that's about when we got really underway with our program to address deficiencies in our, it's both really curb ramps and pedestrian activated signals. And now with the show up, I can follow this script. And now I can see them. Have a flashlight. Yep, there we go. And so just to review, the ADA program and there's our names. Here we are in the city of Lakeview on December 10th. And that's another discussion at that. And I'll run through just a little bit of background about ADA in America and a little bit of ADA here in the state. And we can't be called. This was a statistic that surprised me that 22% of adults in the entire nation have some type of disability. And mobility is the most common type of disability. But we live in Oregon pretty much on par. And there are statistics for each county in Oregon that I was a little surprised to learn. Lake County, it's around 32%. So you're exceeding the norm. And just to give, we gave a little foundation. In 1973, we as a country started paying more attention to disabled folks and passed a reavivalation act, Re-Avocation Act. With the byline you see there. It was really in 1990 with the Act of the Roll Freedom Movement Disability Act was passed. And it created civil rights law about how we take care of disabled partners and presents or prevents the discrimination as described there. So in the 1990s, in response to the ADA, every jurisdiction with more than 50 employees is the criteria must have what's called a transition plan. And the transition plan means going from where we all were at the time to full compliance with the ADA. And so ODOT, we developed our first transition plan. I believe it was 1995. We've updated it several times since, I think the last one was in 2015. And so as we're cooking along, working on our transition plan. And transition plan is a requirement from the HWA. So we would write up, share with the HWA. We started building ramps everywhere. It's about the same time I came on with ODOT. And I managed to construct the more construction I managed in there. And oversaw construct, designing, construction in the area. And we thought we were doing great. And then we got sued, as I said, in 2015. And I won't pound through much of the lawsuit, but I just wanted to just put this slide up here. When we did get to the settlement agreement, these are the categories and things that we settled around. Curb ramps, creating inventory, and then radiating all the curb ramps. Pet signals, the same kind of thing. Some of the other important things that are, temporary destinat, pedestrian access routes were woefully inadequate. We did really well keeping cars going through construction zones. Kind of ignored pedestrians for the most part. So that was one of the big learnings that came out of it for us. One of the issues that the plaintiffs had was that it was, it took a, actually, it took federal action to get ODOT's attention to issues related to ADA. What that means is the only complaint avenue was through a HWA group that had turned to us and direct us to certain things. So one of the parts of our agreement was that we create an avenue for folks to call us or contact ODOT directly so that we could respond to issues related to our ADA facilities. And one of the others that I notes, we've got 22 standards policies or guidelines that we're working on updating in the system with the ADA. And so as I said, in 2015 and a half, we thought we were doing pretty good. And as we were building curb ramps, we built some that were in good shape, some that were in fair shape, fair shape. That means that the truncated domes are missing and there's a couple of other details about that. And then that ramp in the little right corner is clearly in poor shape. And then missing was the subset of four. What we learned as we were being sued and studying up on the ADA is that the range of four was different than what we thought. Clearly, the ramp on the left is in poor condition, but the ramp on the right is also in poor condition. And it's in poor condition because that flat area that that young man is standing on is supposed to be less than 2% slope in all directions. And look, there's a 3.4% slope on that one. And then the other landing has a 2.3% slope. So that ramp in our current inventory shows up as in poor condition. And speaking of inventory, one of the first things that we did was we were going to scan all, not scan, we studied the measurement with depth. All of the ramps in our system. And out of, in our initial, out of the 27,300 and so on ramps, 97% of them are noncompliant. They were in actual, bearable poor condition. This is our inventory after we worked on ramps, this is the end of 2018. And in 2018, we managed to upgrade only about 600 ramps. And so this shows a different total, which would be for the whole state, about 95%. And I just highlighted, here in Lakewood, we're actually in central Oregon, I missed that point. And I think it is, it's right around 95, 96%. And really across the state, everybody's in about the same condition. And you can also see, let's see, the regions, legacy description of the blocks up there. Each of the parts of the state that we have, what we call our regions, that manage our construction projects. All of them, all of them have different number of ramps, obviously. But again, they're all about the same level of noncompliance. So as we were learning our level, and actually, I'm sorry, this comes out of the settlement agreement itself. And what we negotiated to was that in the first five years, first of all, we negotiated a 15 year window of our programs in compliance. And we negotiated in five year increments, first increment 30% in the first five years, right, 2022. And you can read the numbers for the rest of those. At this point in time, we are intensely focused on 2018 to 2022. And I, my group, we've laid out, and I guess we'll call this something, the strategy on how we're going to get to 8,000 ramps by the end of 2022. And that made this really confusing. But the dark and vertical bond is things that are already done. The dark halix bond are things that are underway as we speed. And then the lighter font in the halix are what we are, what we're planning for to 2022. In fact, currently, I've got a call now for projects for 2022. And you see the red circle there under pilots. Lakeview, along with another pair of projects, Sub Union and Enterprise, are all part of an initial pilot that we started actually in 2017. Tuned it up in 2018 when I came on board. And the intent of the pilot program is to demonstrate for Oregon to learn a simpler way and more cost efficient way to deliver programs. When we first got sued, we were so surprised that what we were doing is inadequate. We kind of took our design requirements to the max. And now it takes one week to design a single ramp. And it's not in a corner, it's a single ramp. And we do three eventual surveys. I think there are 60 points that we designed to on a ramp. I think that's a ramp, not a corner. So we've really gone overboard with level of detail. And that plays over into construction and increases our construction costs because the contractor then is held to all 60 of those points being one. So I think we're unique in the nation with that as our singular approach. And so as I came on board, I came on board in 2018, and I have more of a construction program delivery background. I did something of a scan around the country to see what other jurisdictions were doing, frankly, around the state also. And there's an approach to designing curb ramps, designing and constructing curb ramps that is far less labor intensive. We don't need the three dimensional model. We don't need 60 points. And so the pilot program is experimenting with that kind of approach. We did a couple of pilots over in the Grand Valley, pretty small projects, but we had very high rate of success. And so Lakeview and Union Enterprise are our first gambit into taking those into a production, or that approach into a production mode. So, and this is, talk about the 2020 program. For 2018 and 2019, our production has been very low. Less than 1,000 ramps per year. In fact, I think it's over about 1,500 combined. That is not a production rate that could get us to where we did in 2022. And so we've really thrown ourselves, had a big construction season in 2020. And as, and all those little red circles just are the areas where the projects are. We're looking at a total of 3, 3,200 ramps statewide. I need 2,400, and then to get 2,400 consistently every year for actually the next 13 years to make our volume requirements. We overprogrammed this first year expecting we're going to see some attrition in some of the ramps that were just too hard to do, so we'll take them out. Because we are also trying to move very fast ways. Lakeview Union and Enterprise had a jump. We really got underway in those in 2018. And so those are nearing the point where we're ready to let the construction projects for those. And that's what brings us here, is we now have a notion, is whatever we call it, or what we think we want to do. Wanted to share that with the community and take any feedback that you're interested in giving. And so with that, I think the guys that actually know what they're doing are ready to talk.
So if you squint your heart eyes really, really hard, you can see the red outlines up on the intersection. We knew that you wouldn't be able to see them all up here, so we have some poster boards we've got going up in the three, three different areas. And kind of the limits of the project are, they're all along the state highway on 395, which is our, the south limits are down at Lake Street. And then the north limit is up on H Street as you kind of circle around the corner. H Street can drop south pretty hard and back down to the south and the west. And then going out from 140 goes, it stops just short of the railroad track, so the intersection just back to the road checks up at the same street. Basically doing all four, all four, working on all four corners. We won't be doing any work out into the street in the middle of the intersection. We're trying to just keep it, keeping the work right at the corners, just at the median ramps. There won't be any work in between the intersections. So we're kind of just constrained to like each of the four corners, at each of the intersections at the time. And I can look through and did a little bit of, kind of had some examples on some of the intersections. If I can push right up in here. So one of them was, so this is south at the fourth street. So right now, there's two, there's actually two ramps at that corner right now with the separated sidewalks. The sidewalks are separated away from existing curb. But there aren't any, the truncated domes, truncated domes with the yellow, the yellow pads with the bumps on that provide tactile warning, actually for blind people as they're entering into the street. To let them know they're entering to a street area that will have cars instead of just pedestrian traffic. And so that's kind of what's wrong with this ramp. And on these ones, their slopes are actually fairly flat, so they're somewhat, they have, well, compared to some of them. And this is what, kind of what we did is a rendering. We're still, we've got some 10% concept plans that we've put together and right now we're working on the final plans or turning the draft of the final plans.
Next Friday.
Next week. Yeah, next week. Yeah. Next week could be Howard's, our Christmas present to Howard, so he can review the plans a little bit for us. And then, this is kind of a side by side view of what we'll look close to. So again, the improvements will just be at the, at the intersection corners. This is down on the very south end of the project, at Lake Street. Right now, there's, at every, at every intersection corner, there's supposed to be two, we're supposed to have two ramps. One to cross the highway and another one to cross the, across, across Knight Street. This only has one intersection, one ramp now, and so there's kind of what we're thinking to put two ramps in on that corner to how they would fit in around that corner radius. Kind of keeping the same radius it is, as it is right now, pretty much, and trying to maintain the existing drainage patterns. And that's one thing, Jeff, when we talked, when we talked to the guys at Enterprise and Union, if there's any existing drainage issues, any puddles that you have now. Our intent is to try to make the puddles smaller instead of bigger. So if you have any corners that you know that are bad, let us know which corners, those already are getting, getting problems, and we can try to make, we can try to make sure we don't need you with the problem works that it is now.
Several of those corners have inherent problems with the, the storm drains themselves are flooded up. And we've dealt with the local people and they're reluctant to get very far without. But there's going to be several to talk about that have issues that need to be really.
Yeah. And that's like, how am I going to be able to help out, talking to Mr. Maintenance and getting you some extra help with getting them flooded?
So are, is the, when the last project came through, are the inlets and stuff within the cities? Are they still the states?
They're the states if they're on the highway.
So it varies from community to community with the.
Yeah, yeah, we've had that conversation with Steve Anderson quite a bit. And it looks to him as well that they belong to you guys if they're on the highway. But whatever it takes, we'll work together because we want to, you know, we're going to have the things underwater.
Yep, yep, yeah. Then on the other side, it's on the other side of Knight Street. There's, it's just one, one ramp at the end of this corner, and it was like two. And that, I believe in, maybe Paul can describe the, what we're planning on putting in the middle on some of these ones.
Sure. We're, we're going to need to have, as far as the, for the ODOT ADA requirements, they require two separate, two separate ramps at each corner. And sometimes to get some, the appropriate separation, we can use what we call a wing, which is just a slope down to, down to the throat of the ramp itself. The throat of the ramp being the main travel way of the ramp. Sometimes we just don't have enough room to make the minimum requirements for wings. And so we need to put some landscaping area in there. And that's kind of the little brown triangle between the, between the two ramps. And landscaping can vary, we, landscaping material can vary. And what that can be, what it can't be is solid concrete. That's unacceptable because the logic being that that appears to be a walking area that somebody could walk off the curb with that being side impaired or mistaken for a part of the ramp or part of the sidewalk. So some, some options that we're looking at right now that we, that we intend to move forward with are cobbles in that area, meaning four to six inch round rock to, to present a tactile surface which somebody that's sight impaired would be able to feel that this is not an area to walk. Some other options are grass, gravel, plain dirt, bark mulch. And we felt that the cob, this cobble idea would be the least maintenance for the, for the, for the maintenance guys out there. With weeds and moving.
Even that textured concrete wouldn't be.
We've actually proposed that and tried that. And right now, the ADA standard, the ADA standards at ODOT, they're saying that that textured concrete isn't enough of a landscaping surface to make it divide enough differentiation between.
Non-convulsing.
Yeah, non-convulsing sidewalk, yeah.
Anything that's in there loose tends to migrate out into the street.
Yes.
Into the ramps. So if you guys did cobble, would that be set with the slurry or would it just be in there loose?
Well, we'd like to, that's up to the air right now. We would like to, we'd like to set it in grout is our, is our preference. Right now, the, the instruction is to not set it in grout. And we're working, we're trying to work through that to hopefully set that in completely in grout.
Yeah, because here, most of them are in that, in the highway.
Yes, yes, absolutely.
And that's one of those issues that we're working internally with our standards engineers for the ADA. Can we get some of those things resolved? That question comes up in most every community.
We did this in, right? We pretty much about five years ahead of what you guys are now. Same reason, we get, it's taken a suit, they did a lot of contracting with downstairs, kind of like. And we tried not setting it. And the state's got a lot of money going back every year to reinforce because the cobble disappears.
Right.
Or anything you put in there that's not soft concrete or some kind of slurry in the grout, it will disappear.
So I live with the guys who do these standards. And one of the things that we talked about is a port setup where you've got cylinders of some size or hex cylinders of some size that stick up there. And the challenge of that is how you bring it to a new place. But the bottom line, what I'm explaining is we're open to try things. And so if we can think of something, I can help carry that through.
The core decorative, like what you're talking about, California did that to, they got sued over it. Because they called it a tripping river.
There you go.
Where cobble was, they said it was more of a natural type product. And they would consider, even though you're still dealing with the same heights as in issue, right? But they, they were sued over that because of tripping.
Fair enough. Did you guys form the cobble into, like you said, with concrete to where it's kind of set up kind of based in concrete, or is that still considered to be?
I think, I think that's what's being discussed. And so far, we, our standards folks are nervous about that. So I did hear that we're going to try it someplace.
They, yeah, they should look, yeah, they should look at what California's doing now, because they're about five, 12 years ahead of what you guys are doing. We poured everything in the seven sack story. And that way, if you do have to access it, it becomes out.
It's interesting, we have a pure extending group California does.
I do quite a few of these.
And if you guys have preferences on what, for situations like that where you have the kind of pie shaped piece in the middle of what, there's going to be some stuff that is going to work and then some stuff that, there's options for that, to landscape that. And the key is it, is that it just isn't traversable. And so if you have, if you have some preferences that there's some opportunity, we might want to incorporate some of those. But we have to do some negotiating with.
Let that through the standards.
Yeah, let through the standard. Which we've been doing, we've been getting very good at that, proposing, proposing options.
Some days they're, they're your friends.
Yes. Some days they're like, that's a great idea. More often it's.
The bigger areas, cobble, I know worked the best. We use that more often than not. You know, so it was a cobble for the, for the slurry. It worked really well. The smaller areas is kind of awesome.
Yeah, so you pick up a corner and you just.
Yeah, so, yeah, when we came, we came up with the ground cobble idea a couple of months or so ago. And it was, it was flying, it was going, and so it, it gains traction, but now it's kind of impossible. We're developing more of it.
If you don't pour it, set it, it would end up everywhere.
Got a bench there?
There, that's a good point. And one, one, some places that we can do, that we've been told that we can do some, some concrete is if there's something in that triangle, like a bench or utility hole or hydrant or something that discourages people from walking there.
Is, we ever get your setback, actually?
Yeah. Another place, I'll throw in another place that we intend to use this cobble idea or this landscaping idea is to separate when we have a ramp and a, and a driveway right next to each other. There's got to be some sort of set, positive separation between the two. And this is where we've also used that landscaping. I know Lakeview's got several places where there's, where you've got to have a ramp and a, and a driver right next to each other. So we'll have this landscaping island. So we'll have this landscaping island situation several times, several places throughout.
I have a question. Um, based on that you guys have already been doing some communities, is this like an ongoing thing? I mean, when are you gonna be done? Like, when do you know that, like, that's good, like, we're good? Or will you be coming back around after 15 years and saying that wasn't good? We're gonna do it again or?
I do, I take this as a. Oh, yeah. That's a, that's a really interesting.
It's like not a rare opportunity.
The way that we are entering the settlement agreement is that we will go in and build ramps that meet current standards today. Once we have, we have an accessibility consultant, if you didn't mention it works, we have lessons of plaintiffs. Once the accessibility consultant agrees that we are compliant, then there's no more discussion about compliance with the ramp.
So will you get to that agreement before you start working or?
The standards are already established. The challenge was we weren't meeting all of the standards before. The standards were established in the 1990s. I think the first version was, I think it was 1995 or '96. And they haven't varied that much since then. So the standards are pretty clean. We just didn't know the degree to which we would be made. Like the thickness of two business cards is two foot level can whip up. So that's a lesson for us. So now we will go according to standards. And again, once they're accepted, then we're no longer discussing the current standards. Does that make sense?
It's a whole crazy thing, I think, but I can see a need for improvement. But I just am wondering, like, here we are, this is it. This is, we're meeting all your standards, there's no more litigation, there's no more like 20 years from now coming back and saying you need to go do it all over again. I mean, it's expensive, yes?
Yeah.
So I'm saying like one and done, and then you go to the next one. And I'm just, that's, I'm just wondering, because it's, it's time consuming for all of us to worry about, you know, do we have to go back next year to add a piece of stone or something like that?
The ADA standards are set and have been set pretty clearly for several years. So we know, once they give you these ramps, they bring in talent up to compliance with the ADA act.
Then it just makes it.
Right.
As far as changing the desire of the ramps, your slope, your pitch, you know, not like.
Would you set at the beginning before you start the study, this is the pilot program, to see if you can do it cheaper or something, so?
Cost efficient, effective, cost effective and cheaper. That's really important, yeah.
But, you know, who decides if you're, if that's gonna be the standard or that's not good enough or you have to do it all over?
The standard is set.
Yeah, the standard is set. But you're just trying to figure out how to do it easier as well.
Easier and more costly.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, we don't have an example of. But one of the things that we did, starting in 2017, I think, is to develop an inspection pool that details all of the measurements that must be inserted criteria. So now, when we're done with construction, we go and inspect every ramp according to that. And even, and we are finding ourselves that we're only getting, at least currently, we're only getting about 60% of compliant when we first afford them, of course placing. And so with a project, there is a fair amount to go back and run here, take panels out and do that kind of stuff. We've got a big training program going for our inspectors because we decided we didn't train inspectors well enough to follow the things that have to be right and how close they have to be. And so that same inspection form, or that inspection form is the same form or the same data. But then the, what we call the accessibility consultant that oversees us, they measure the same things. And we've gotten to a point where we've got a couple of folks inside the department that get the same answers as the accessibility consultants. And so we've got, I think we've got a foundation now to build. These guys here that did the pilot program, that was in 2018, yes. It was a little bit of a learning curve. But as we moved ahead in that pilot program, we were able to, again, get the same results as both our internal experts in accessibility and stuff. So we think we've got a foundation to start with in terms of getting compliant for me. Now we're trying to figure out how to do it with high production, effective and efficient.
I think just to relate to council's concerns, this project here, even though it's a pilot, it has to meet those standards. So you guys are not finished with it until the standards are met, regardless of whether this is gonna work statewide or not. So when you guys are done, it will meet the standards.
Yes.
It's not a state standard.
Correct, it's better, exactly.
On your truckated domes, are you guys using the wet set or are you sticking with your truckated domes?
Uh, we're wet set. Most of the, there's, so ODOT, there's what's called, I had something similar for culture. So there's a qualified products list where the list of approved products gets reviewed by ODOT and it has to have some project's previous experience, even if it's state where they get approval on a trial basis and then use those products. And so almost all of them on the qualified products list are the wet set ones. There are some that are not on the list, that are, that are on the list, that are the, like the screw down kind, liquid down kind. Those ones don't last as long, the corners come up on those.
They don't do too bad as a normal climate, but we're up here above about 3500 feet and we have issues with it coming hard. We were allowed to use a lot of the screw down, the piece of that ones. And we had issues in higher elevation. We did it on the, which are fast basically, the ramp speed, everything that they don't have truckated domes. So we used a stick down. And I, we did Bernie, and Bernie had a lot of ramps that were at the SPAC with no truckated domes. We used all stick down, a year later we got cut concrete and using that set. Because they, with the DI serves that the state uses and everything else, they did on the sidewalk, they get under roads and it's not.
So much.
Yeah, that's.
The learning curve.
Yeah. And so many things to learn.
Oh, yeah.
One thing I do want to mention is because this is a pilot project, this and a few other, handful of other cities have been selected to be this pilot project. We are moving, we're moving as fast as we can through these cities, Lakeview being one of them. And because of that, some of the ramps, we wanna get the low hanging fruit first. And then the following year, we'll come back and get some of the more difficult ramps. When I say more difficult, you know, maybe right away needs to be done, maybe some utilities need to be moved. We just don't have the time to move immediately. So we're gonna go through and do, the intent is to go through and do most of the ramps throughout town. And in the following year, come back and finish the rest.
And when are we gonna be starting here?
This summer is the intent.
Is this?
Correct, point.
Yeah.
Will this be, will ODOT be actually doing the project? Will this project work good?
It'll be good. And this is, project's got critical funding in it, so we have to do the formal deal. One of the things about, you know, the communities that were selected, Union, Enterprise, like you, there have been some very recent jobs, we thought that, you know, we have some good sidewalks we can work with. And, you know, Garrett was really proactive and my area manager is proactive too, trying to get onto these programs. Because one of the things, you know, we have a lot to correct, but if we have a project going through a community and it starts out as a paving job, now we have to include ADA with that. So you might have had the money for paving up here. But when you add the ADA to it, now you're only paving this part of the avenue.
Exactly.
So, I mean, this will be really beneficial because later on, ODOT will be able to come back to Lakeview and the ramps are taken care of, it's just paving.
We're a lot, a lot of work, the contractors and the experiment they do these too, if they haven't done. There's a lot more to putting these ramps in than this form of concrete and walking.
Well, that's part of the idea about the pilots too, is, you know, we were working up this really complicated 3D design. And what I'm hearing from people who run the field is that, you know, just tell us what we need to have for ramps, what we need for half. And so our consultants on this one are gonna work with our contractors in the field to do some field fitting so that they're done the first time and right.
Another thing that ODOT has recently started requiring too is not only for the construction inspectors to go through the training class, but to get certified, pass an exam that has some of the ADA requirements about what ramps need to look like again. But they're actually also requiring the construction contractor to go through the training as well. And in our experience, we had a project like probably, I think it was two years ago, where most of the projects were building a path, it was like a bike, multi-lane bike path project. But there was like, there was about a dozen ADA ramps that handled path where it came up to the street. And our inspector had just been trained and knew how critical the ramps were to get them exactly right. And so they were just getting, he was meeting Matt with him ahead of time and said, okay, this is where the area is gonna be cleared out. So we talked about that ahead of time. And then as they started reporting, our inspector said, what is your level to check the smokes? He said, oh, we don't have one. He said, well, let me, here's mine, you are high. He said, no thanks, I don't need that. He said, I really think you're doing it. He said, no, we got it. So said, okay. Said, well, we're gonna be measuring when we're done. And if it doesn't pass, then you're gonna have to tear it out if there is a spot. And so they measured them all and failed. And so then they tore it out the second time. They actually agreed to borrow the logo and actually check it when we report them. The next time, I think like three quarters of them failed. And then the next time, they sent their superintendent to class and then they reported them all again and then after that, then they all passed. And so that education piece with the construction contractor is really.
Seeing a lot of them put out. A lot of ways to go through it.
Yeah. And there will be, I mean, we're gonna, we're gonna do everything we can to get them right the first time, but there will be some that aren't quite right. And we're gonna have to tear pieces out or tear parts out. It's just the way it, it's just kind of the nature of the world. So there will be some that once we get them going, we're gonna have to take them off. We can play some, because there's gonna be something that's not quite right about them. We're gonna do the absolute best that we can, but.
And if someone pointed out, we need to.
Yeah. Any questions? Anybody have any questions?
Yeah, just a couple more things. You know, one of the things I will have to do, if you want us to work with you on this or what, so, you know, as far as, say, your bell boxes and things like that, I mean, you can, you can do that yourself if you want. Or no. Okay, but we'll have to have, you know, the communication on that, that you want us to include that as part of the contract.
Construction standard.
Yeah. That sort of stuff. So utilities, the coordinator, the woman who's doing the coordination on the utilities will be in contact with you on that. Another thing is too is that, like other projects that we've had in coming through town with ODOT, we need to, uh, co-operative improvement agreement. So you've seen those, I think, in the past.
Yeah.
And so we'll be working on one of those shortly. And we'll certainly have to do, and I'm sure we'll have to go to the consultant.
Thank you guys.
Thank you. Okay.
Are you guys, might I go ahead and sit through the rest of the meeting or?
Maybe.
We'll take, we'll take a break and you guys can go ahead and.
Okay.
Department reports, Scott's not here. Dennis Flapp, he said he had nothing more to add, did his report. Jeff, do you have anything else?
You know, I, everything's pretty much there in the report with the exception of I've been doing a little bit more research on the snowgate. And there's not really a dealer in our area. I talked to a Pape Cat and I talked to one Peterson Tractor in Cloud Falls. And they said the only thing that we have that might even possibly be able to support one of those would be our newest grader. But we don't do the outside, you know, pass with that. So at this point, it looks to me like it's not a cost effective option for the equipment that we have, in my opinion.
Okay. Uh, Daryl's not here. Cheryl, Cheryl, you got anything?
I want to. So you wanna tape it for this or down below?
Whichever you like, I can get your feedback.
Well.
You decide.
Let's put it down below.
Okay.
You're gonna be the one talking about all in others. So, um, let's move on down to public comment. Are there any public comments? Karen, none? No old business? New business? Um, when we go to forensic accountant, so what's your?
So I would like to bring in a forensic accountant to go through our records to just make sure that we are fiscally balanced. Um, there's been a lot of change of hands. There's been some procedures that have, that we've changed that you need to have, the person who's bringing in money not be the same person that's balancing and reconciling the accounts. So I just think it's a good time with, with me coming in new to have a really deep, deep dive on our financials. And a forensic accountant, they're amazing. I mean, they will find that little tiny piece of whatever. And I think it's important that we do it. Um, I've talked to our insurance guy, Andrew, and he is giving back to me on Thursday to let me know if our insurance could absorb some of the cost for a forensic accountant. My wish, but it's up to y'all, I would want someone from Portland to come in with no ties to our community, nobody knows anybody from anybody. And then when they leave, we don't know a map for that either. So that it remains really neutral and whatever is found is what's found based on that they found that, not because they know somebody or this or that or there is any ties or, you know, unknown strings. But I just think it's a good time. And I'd like to get going on it sooner than later because we do have our budget coming up and I'd rather have it done.
Prior to.
Prior to putting out our new budget.
Have you looked at the cost of that at all?
I haven't, I was waiting for Thursday and when I, and then I'm gonna start looking for different options. And I'll bring you the options.
Okay.
And the costs at the time. And then you guys can decide what you'd like to do.
I think you guys may need to put it up for an RFP process. And the reason why I'm saying that is that way you don't have any issues with anybody thinking it's. So I think find what the, find what team that you're looking for, then do this in RFP and then do what we've done. Because there is a list of public accountant firms that specifically do the district entities and then have it, it needs to be somebody other than our auditor, obviously.
Well, yeah. I also, not to interrupt you, Jeff, but there's a difference in a regular accountant, forensic accountant. And I would support a firm if that's what they do is.
Exactly. And maybe that's what we need to do is put a list out to ones that are just that, that have, that are government entity specific. Because again, there's different forensic accountants for different areas of, so that would be my suggestion. And it also depends on the cost, if it's under a certain amount, you may be able to do it under a less.
As long as it's under $10,000.
Exactly. So that's gonna be kind of a, that'll be the kind of, that's, that's the national, we'll be kind of stay with it if we don't wanna do the RFP.
Yeah, if it goes over $10,000, it's fair to probably do.
Yeah.
Well, I'll get more details and then we can choose a path to go on. Um, then going, um, with the finances, we have been getting, we have been printing out these for the council. And nobody looks at them. So I'm, we're just continuing, we're not gonna print them out anymore. With that said, you can come to us and say, I would like to see this date from this date because it's in, it's still, it's stored in the cloud. So if you wanna see them at any time you can, and we will be writing them at the end of the month. And I'm wanting to email them to you to save on paper, but we're no. And I'm wanting to email them to you to save on paper, but we're no, I just don't see us holding on to these because I just went through like four years of them in a pile somewhere where nobody goes. So.
There's a lot of those places.
So in order to save, and it's time consuming for staff. And so, um, you know, it's not that we're not making it available to you. We're just saving time, money and effort and storage. So there you go.
All right, uh, discuss new job position.
So I would like to do a, uh, potentially a part-time up at the front desk, um, just to cover, because the girls are, I'm, everybody's running every which way. I don't want to do it until I am able to plug some of our holes. Because we've got money going out to places that we don't need to. And I'm bringing a lot of stuff in-house. So as soon as I get that ready, we may be able to just see that we have the extra funds from plugging up the holes. So that it's neither here nor there.
So it's just a final.
Yeah, yeah. So, but it's, so until I get that done, I'd like to have that as a placeholder. Potentially another little part-time person could come in if I can find money. But it's not extra, just found.
Okay, time closure, time management.
I would like to bring.
I told you this.
Okay. Um, I have been looking at an online timesheet where everybody would log, log in with their time, log out for lunch, log in for lunch, log out at after hour in the middle of their off work. Um, I've been looking at different systems to do that so that alls we have to do is run a report and it calculates the time, overtime, overtime, time to have, vacation, whatever, but it's done in five minutes. And I'm wanting that timesheet to plug into a QuickBooks program. And I'll lay all of that out for you. I just have one more piece to figure out. But to have the time sheet online and, uh, QuickBooks is about seventy dollars a month.
And I do think it's about time for you guys to look at that because once, assuming that our thing gets proven, the upcoming fire contractor, everything else, you guys are gonna be going, CIS is gonna be going to a fourteen day on, fourteen day off. And all of that stuff needs to be tracked and if there is a, so as long as it can be set up.
Fourteen day on, fourteen day off.
To be fourteen, excuse me, fourteen day envelope. That'd be great.
I was like, it'll be your area.
It'll, it'll be a four, it'll be a four, it'll be every two week pay period, you guys. So.
Fourteen week pay period.
Fourteen, yeah, fourteen day pay period. So that.
Also, not to interrupt you. Jeff, uh, do you guys, and I'm just running thoughts to my head when she brought this up. Do you guys basically keep track of different hours for different tasks that you're doing?
We do.
Different sewer, different, you know, all that.
Because our work is calm.
Right.
Please.
Because I know we, Jim does that through JASCO. We had to do that down there too. Depending on what program she's looking at or goes with, those guys can actually do their timesheet and change positions with an app like yourself.
Can you just an app?
Because they can go through, they're done filling potholes and they gotta go deal with sewer issue. They pull in, they put in a, um, a number, whatever, you know, nine hundred is sewer, nine ten is roads. They put in nine hundred, clocking them that job. We had to do that down there because we had guys that would do the time work. We had guys that would do paving, right? And because the work is calm, we're gonna actually save us a ton of money.
Yeah.
So it's just a matter of retraining an employee.
Yeah.
That's, that's the hardest part of it. But it may, it may help you out in your reports, by doing all some of that.
Well, yeah, because we could pull reports to see how much time is being spent on projects. We can do pie chart, we can power graph, bar graphic. We can compare it from this year to last year. We, I mean, we can do all sorts of stuff so you can then project into your next year's budget.
You could even put in there a, uh, a workbook for to, so if you have a water leak on a water main and you have to drop the fuel in there too, you can start breaking that time out, tracking that time. So it just depends on how detailed you want to get it.
Yeah.
And it's hard, and I know it is, because I had it all the time getting my guys to do it.
Yeah. I think I spent my whole day making sure they're changing.
Right. You'll have the biggest struggle. I, I'm not gonna say you're lying, you're gonna have the biggest struggle.
Right.
Or you can just clock them in and clock them out. You can write in their times. The biggest thing, and I know where Michelle's going with this. The biggest thing is keeping track of their actual timer and timeout and their lunches because in an audit, if your guys are just writing their lunches, and I've been caught on this.
Indeed.
If they're just writing their lunches in, and say you have an issue, you fire one of those guys. And they come back and say, no, we were told we had to write our lunches in and we didn't get them. You're right.
Yep.
We wrote one for eighty-eight thousand dollars running here.
Yeah.
Over lawsuit with two employees. Because they said, no, they told us we had to write our lunches in even though we didn't get them. And we spent two years in court and we didn't even go to jail because we didn't have any kind of digital time.
One thing I will suggest, whatever vendor you look at, is the initial setup of that thing. Devil's always in those details. And that initial setup is the really important part. Once you've got it set up, it works like clockwork. So you want to bring in somebody that has, knows what your requirements are and knows what you need for each one of those categories and everything else. Because you're gonna have some different units that have different things that are going on especially. So that's, it's the initial setup, that's really the issue.
It's all set up with classification numbers.
Right.
It's the, the new software, the older software that we started with is terrible. But the newer software, the newer programs that are out are pretty easy set up, pretty easy to maintain, pretty easy to adjust wages and everything else.
And they're really easy to log in and log out. I mean.
But it's gonna be hard for his guys. I'm not, I'm, there's no, I guess, Andrew, but it's because everybody, they're sitting in a truck.
Sewer and their.
Right. They're, they're sitting in a truck and they're going to a sewer job. And then all of a sudden, we got a water leak somewhere and they're pulling off that. They don't even get to the sewer job. They're clocked in on that. They jump out of the truck, feet on the ground, ready to go to work. They're not gonna go, oh, wait a minute, I gotta change my work. And they won't do it. I think they do that.
Right. Like I said, I'll spend my entire day changing people back and forth into the login and.
The, the main thing is, you can still do what you're doing with your guys, but they're still gonna have to clock in in the morning, clock out for lunch, clock back in for lunch, clock out at the end of the day.
Sure.
Those are the main ones.
And how do you do that?
It'll all be down on your cell phone?
Cell phone.
I know that they're on private phones, but it's just an app. It's real easy for them to do.
Could we have a laptop down there specifically for that?
Yeah.
Yes.
You can do it either way. You can do it on the phone.
I don't know how I feel about that program being on their phone. And then it does automatically download to the main program or?
There's nothing they can change on. Alls they can do is clock in and clock out. They, they can't get in, look at their hours. They can't get in and look at their paycheck. The one that we had, I don't know what you're looking at, but the one that we had allowed them, okay, one word, they clock in. They have a code they put in, they pull up the app, they put in their employee number and hit clock in. That's all it shows. It shows no information. You cannot get any information out of that app. Instead of clocking in, clocking out for lunch, clocking back in for lunch, clocking out for lunch.
I might make another recommendation. I would run, um, C I S has a lot of vendor and technology lists that they, that meet, you know, what they feel is clear enough and everything along those lines. And also are, you know, more tailored to government players. I would suggest you reach out to C I S or the advisors and kind of get them, um, because I think they may have some different products, especially ones that would work with the cell payable program to, you know, so that are complimentary. So that would be my suggestion is, because you, obviously, you don't want to come, you don't want to fly by night, Ben, or something like that to state a breach because it's always on the employer, not the employee, you know.
So they get a thirty minute lunch. Do they have to clock in? Does it have to be an exact thirty minutes? I mean, what if they clock out, clock back in after twenty-two minutes? Are we gonna then owe them for the rest of the time? And will they just get docked twenty-two minute?
Yeah.
See, because that's, it's like, wait, 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 wait.
But the problem with them not taking a thirty minute lunch.
Then we get, if we're not giving, I'll let you go.
If, if, if they're not taking a thirty minute lunch, we're in violation. And if it goes to court and those guys say, well, they only allowed me twenty minute lunch. We had to clock out for thirty. So you're not paying them for that ten minutes. When it goes to court, invariably, somebody's gonna forget to clock back in after lunch. Alls you, you just have to approve it. That's all it comes down to. So they come to you and say, I forgot to clock in after lunch. Okay, well, how long did you take your lunch? Thirty minutes? Okay. And you just next one. That's, that's not a big, because my guys forget to clock out on Friday.
It seems like a lot of extra stuff for me to do again, which I'm already booked.
Yeah, you, you've got a ton to play.
So maybe we wait and have your guys continue to do handwritten.
Until we get the bugs worked out of it and work with everybody else and then start pacing you guys.
Because it, the point is to have it be easier, not harder.
Right. And it would make it much harder. And it would be something wrong with it all the time. Or you could do five people. I would be doing five people's checking in and out all day long.
Do you guys go back to the yard for lunch often?
Yeah.
Then we can.
Or to a restaurant.
But see, if you do a restaurant, you can just, you're with them, you can just note it. And then you can sign off on the timesheet for that. You don't have to worry about it. But if they're going back to the yard, it's just another step that's gotta be done, you know.
But the problem with it is.
It just seems like a lot.
There's always jobs.
They don't see what we're gaining any because they put a five hour shift in the morning, half hour lunch and a four hour shift in the afternoon. So everybody's off for that half hour.
Right. But it comes down to when you walk into court, where you have this rental employee that is pissed off, but is a big fire.
But I mean, it's, well, it's not a time card, but it's written on their time card that they signed that said they had a half hour lunch.
When they stand up in court and say, they told me I had to put that in there, you're right.
We were, let's keep us from telling them they have to close the program in early twelve.
It's, it, the court will look at that and say, no, it's a digital timesheet that you're responsible for. It, it's, I went through this about six years ago and we wrote an eighty-eight thousand dollar check for guys that were actually getting their lunch. That stood there and said, we haven't had lunch in two years. Because we do traffic control and they don't allow us to take great for lunch. It, it's, it's a, another thing kind of like the eighty eight thing. These employees that jump from job to job to job are realizing this and there's so many more and more people. If you don't have.
It's really good for people that work certain hours. I mean, I've had several jobs where you get a call and you have to go do it, whether it's on your lunch hour in the middle of the night. I mean, you know, that, that makes that kind of thing really difficult, the doing it on a call.
And then, and then clocking in for a call back wouldn't work because they get, you know, if you go and you do something that takes forty-five minutes and it's in the middle of the night, you get paid for three hours.
Yeah.
So that's, where does that go in an electronic program?
Programming.
It's all programmed under a code. It, it is, buts that would have to be worked out.
Oh, yeah, there's definitely bugs that people got. And we would bring you guys in last after things are done. But if, if we don't start tracking time, what we just went through, the fire department, it's gonna be a whole nother issue. You know, Lakeview could be lucky because there's not a big turnover in employees and the employees that we have are great employees. But as these guys start retiring and you bring these younger guys in, that's where you're gonna start seeing issues. Of course, you're leaving in a couple of years soon, so you don't care.
But let's make it easy for you and at your people.
Sure.
So why don't we just kind of tier, tier how we bring people into the program so that you can kind of start dropping the seeds of, we're gonna start going digital, so.
Start moving Lakeview into the twentieth century.
But I, I'll get all the information you need. And then if you want us to write, I'll, I'll show you how it works. And, and then, um, we'll brainstorm to see how we can migrate over easily for your.
Yeah, we want the least impact on you, especially your work.
I just don't want it to end up, people making overtime because they clock back in three minutes early all week long, you know.
No, I think you can set, I don't know what program we had, because that was one of my concerns.
I think that concerns.
It adds up.
See how it's been worked out.
Yeah. And five minutes extra is, is overtime. If it's over nine hours.
I, I think it was within three or five minutes of the, your start time or your end time. It was your eight hour period, basically. But I'd have them.
My guys all show up about fifteen minutes early. So they don't clock in until the clock strikes seven on their phones, right?
Or whatever the variance is allowed. The new software is completely different. Because we used to have to break guards out in drive time, setup time, flagging time, product car time. And it sucked because each person had about nine different job codes that they worked under during the day. And it was very difficult.
It's a pain. And it's, it's also very great. It is.
I started missing the great part of it.
Well, the great part, the great part is.
It's like that's your recovery at the end of the day when you get, where your cover's there plus your, your work is calm.
It's a big deal with your work is calm. You actually pay different rates for different jobs.
Right. You know, even playing that where we have a daily timesheet in every single, you know, and then when we have an audit, when we have a lot of our documentation, we have it on paper, on computers as well.
Yeah, we'll have to work with your department a little bit to make it where it don't suck up every minute of your.
Oh, yeah. It might, it'll be a lot of, I keep her all day.
And I would say, say, certainly, there is some differential required department too, that they're, that you can post on there as well. So that's, so like I said, the setup of it is gonna be.
Yeah, it can all be built in.
Correct.
And they just. The biggest part of it is getting the employee to do what they're, what they're supposed to do.
Absolutely.
You know, it's no different. Safeway uses a digital time clock.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
They walk in, they hit their employee number and they hit clock in, they're clocked in. They do it at lunch, they do it on the breaks. Most businesses, most places, they say, use digital timesheets because of lawsuits and work.
Did I do my jobs?
Back in my twenties, it is.
No. Whole difference.
It's a good thing she likes me.
That's all I have. Only occasionally.
Okay, anything else on the?
That's all I have.
Okay. Uh, we have Mayor Council, well, you're a good, you're a good thing. Michelle and I went to a meeting last Friday over in Glamour for a COAC meeting. And it's pretty interesting. They talked about the sidewalks being done and also paving for the airports. I think Lakeview got what, over two hundred thousand dollar grant to repave our airport.
Is there a drag race out there yet?
No, we didn't drag race on the airport.
How tall did you, what do you have for that?
I think we were at a, uh, dawn, it was there, at the air quality meeting. Several interesting things are working on for air quality. So, yes. It's been trying my patience this week.
Okay. Does anybody have anything else?
Well, I do actually because our next meeting is scheduled to be on the twenty-fourth of December, isn't it?
Yeah.
And so I would like to, uh, cancel that.
Oh, we don't have to spend Christmas Eve with us?
But I, I would like to, if you get the information on what you're talking about with this forensic.
Oh, I will. I'll say.
If, if we could have, like, next week, if we know anything to have the special meetings.
We, we were kind of wanting to have a special meeting possibly to ratify our contract with the fire department. And just, I'd love to have that done by the end of the year anyway.
Well, what if.
And I think we're just right there.
If we have it like next week, but, I mean, next week is fine for me anyway. But, um, then I'm gonna, I'm gonna have to talk over the Christmas week.
So as we hear back from Stephen and Brent, let's play it by ear and I want to.
As soon as I know something, I will first let folks know. Yeah. But I would hope by then have it. Unfortunately, it falls in, you lose your score through a couple of minor dramatic changes that need to be made on some aspect of it. And so that's, those, of course, made as quickly as possible until we did it. So, yeah, as soon as we have something, we'll get you guys within twenty-four hours.
And maybe we, maybe you'll have something on that other plane at the same time or?
Yeah, I'm hoping to have information by Thursday after meeting. I'm meeting with him.
This Thursday.
This Thursday. So.
Probably, probably. Yeah.
Yep, it's perfect. You're meeting with him personally or? Yeah, personally.
Security.
And if we have, we have nothing else, we'll return the meeting.
Stephen, are you just hanging on?
No, I'm pretty sure.
Thanks.
No, I, I don't think we need it, but Mr. Mayor, was there gonna be motion on the floor to cancel that other meeting? Like, was that?
And I would believe that we cancel the meeting, our next schedule maybe for December twenty-fourth. And I would believe that we canceled the meeting, our next scheduled meeting for December 24th.
I'll second that.
Postmate in seconds, Dr. Fair.
Hi.
Hi, okay. Now, that being said, we will close the meeting at 5:22.